The sun is hot.
I don't have it.
He seemed very nice behind me.
Can all the microphones be on at the same time? I bet you they can.
I just, yes, they haven't fully checked.
Three ones, three ones.
It's like, see, once you ask, your book, everybody sees that.
All right. This is for everybody. It's seven o'clock. We're all going to need to order. I'm going to ask everybody to stand in the line, please. Will you remain standing in the silence?
Yes, please, if we could reflect on our military in service to our country and our first responders in service to us here in our community. And also a special thought tonight for the wife of our public boards director, who is presently having some real serious health challenges. That would be Mark Miller's wife. Thank you.
Good to see everyone tonight. This scene is streamed live on YouTube. And under Chairman's report, the board met this evening in an executive session to discuss criminal legal matters pertaining to the pipeline situation. The office will close on Monday, February 1st in recognition of President's so that's next Monday. And for a change, we do have a public hearing. And I'm going to allow Derek to turn it over to Bill Chrisman, the Island of the Souls Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have discussed this issue over the last three years at least. A way to basically sub out the delinquent account for utility of the township. And so it requires a board's resolution. So I will pass over to Bill Chrisman.
Welcome, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Good evening, everybody. I am Bill Chrisman. I'm from Lanham, Maryland. Nice to see you all this evening. As was mentioned, there are multiple documents on board tonight related to the collection of delinquent fees for sewer and refuse accounts within the township. My understanding, this has been discussed amongst the board, and the board wishes to proceed to appointing Portnoy and associates to collect those delinquent fees up to and including weaning of the property. In order to do so, the municipal claims and tax claims act requires an ordinance. So you have that for your consideration this evening. This ordinance was publicly advertised in the daily local news according to law. Advertised on February 8th. So you have that ordinance in front of you. This ordinance really appoints Portnoy as your solicitor to collect these delinquent fees. It sets out the fee schedule for those collection activities. And other collection procedures and attendant requirements for them to collect those fees. You also have a resolution that authorizes Portnoy to petition the Chester County Court of Common Pleas to pursue alternative means of service. That is, if they're having trouble getting in contact with the property owner, they can petition court. And there are some legal mechanisms in order to move forward with collecting those fees. And then finally, is an agreement for collection of delinquent municipal claims on behalf of East Ocean Township. And this is basically your contract with Portnoy detailing your responsibilities and their responsibilities. And that was negotiated and reviewed by myself and found to be satisfactory. So what I would ask first, are there any questions related to any of these three documents?
Bill, I have one question. I just want to make sure. I think this is correct way of written, but in the draft motion, you have for number two, authorizing the township solicitor petition to Chester County Court of Common Pleas. That is, the correct legal counsel to do that, when Portnoy petitioning in their capacity, it would be the township solicitor in support of Portnoy or would it be Portnoy?
It would be Portnoy, but in this circumstance, they'll be appointed as a special solicitor.
Ah, right. So that's the reference township solicitor.
Right, exactly.
Could that be clarified in the first draft motion appointment of special solicitor?
You could do that, sure. Really, what that is doing is approving the resolution. The resolution is clear on what it is, but yeah.
Okay. The one additional point I did want to make, Madam Chair, is that our finding's part of a lot of research. Both with other townships regarding Portnoy. Portnoy actually came here and obviously last meeting. So it was important for us to get somebody that we thought would treat everybody with respect and at the same time charge for the township. So we got outstanding feedback from everybody who felt comfortable.
I appreciate that. They also have that partnership component so that they can help anybody who is in the areas to actually think of.
And then just one other point related to the background that we received. Portnoy Law Associates, this is all they do. They are a specialty firm, and that's the sum total of all the legal work they've done related to collections. And I don't know how many municipalities they represent, but it's a googly number. They kind of have a very good track record.
I will add, my office does this work as well, but we fully support Portnoy. They're doing the sort of work that he said. This is what they do. They're very good at it. So I echo what you said.
Okay. Do you have any questions at this time? Do you need to accept a comment?
Yes, on each item prior to voting.
So we'll have to get some motions, no more?
There are two motions each in the first one. Madam Chair, I'd like to first motion to adopt the ordinance including collection procedures, appointment of special solicitor, interest assessment, credit card and debit card charges, and future costs to be added to the amount collected as part of the unpaid municipal claims.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board this time? Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this ordinance? Seeing that, I'm going to call a question. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Cody. Tony Wright is joining us via phone this evening, so while he's not here, he's personally on the phone. So if you have any questions, go ahead. Absolutely, let's move to him. And I would be ready to move forward then as far as the resolution is concerned.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion, the after-relation Q O P two dash oh four, authorizing the township solicitor to petition the Chester County Court of Common Pleas to pursue alternative means of service of gifts or fire factors on delinquent sewer.
I'll second that one as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from residents regarding the resolution? Seeing that, I'm going to call a question now. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Cody. To know about the surprise here, thank you. And looking forward to one more motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the agreement with Portnoy Law Associates Limited for a collection of unpaid municipal claims on behalf of East Ocean Township.
And I'll second that one as well.
Okay. Are there any questions from the advisory? No one. And are there any questions from our residents? Seeing that, I'm going to call a question. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Cody. And no questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your work on this, Bill. There's Dave, I do.
All right. So you will have it moved forward. And you're going to assist us in some more back there. Wait, Portnoy, you're right. Chief, if you don't mind, you come around. See, the person here, he's not there. I'll do this. Here, we go, let's do it. I'm going to go along with this.
Good evening, everybody. If you would like to know more about the criminal activity that's occurring in your neighborhood, including police blotters, arrest cases, and also our community outreach efforts, I invite you to go to our website and also visit our Facebook and our Instagram accounts. With regard to statistics, for the month of January, overall, there were eight hundred and ninety incidents that were investigated in the three townships. With regard to comparisons, it's higher than it was in 2020, but lower than it was in 2019. With regard to East Ocean, we had four hundred and thirty-three of those eight hundred and ninety incidents occurred in East Ocean. It's a slight increase over 2020 and a twenty-eight percent decrease over 2019. And a lot of people think that, I'm saying that the calls for service are down, but in fact, when you look at the statistics, you get a very different picture. For example, when you examine the statistics pre-pandemic, 2019 to 2021, you see a very different picture. For example, assault investigations increased seventeen percent from 2019 to 2021. Child abuse investigations increased thirty-one percent. Domestic disturbances increased thirty-eight percent, and burglaries increased forty-five percent. So our overall numbers are down. What? As far as serious crimes, the statistics are trending upwards. With regard to why our overall calls for service are down, it appears primarily it is proactive traffic enforcement due to our diminished staffing and our increased serious calls. We're focusing our efforts there rather than on traffic enforcement. With regard to the police blotter, I'm just going to summarize what January was like for East Ocean. Twenty-four disturbances, two child abuse investigations, one simple assault investigation, one burglary investigation, two weapons investigations where somebody attempted to purchase a weapon that they're not authorized to do. Fourteen fraud investigations, five criminal mischief investigations, one murder theft investigation, which turned out to be unfounded luckily. One missing juvenile investigation where the subject was located, and four theft investigations. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question. I didn't see anything on the PPU's during the year. How do you come out versus our...
The PPU year for East Ocean and West Ham runs to September. With regard to that end of the year PPU, we were within a, I believe roughly a half percent of the required or the requested ratio. Thornberry's PPU year ends at the end of December. We were within fifty hours of the contract mandate. And when you break that down per day, that means that we gave roughly fourteen minutes of service extra every day. That's pretty precise. We're very proud of that.
Chief? Okay. Sorry to give you some jimmy, Heather. The number of incidents investigated that you mentioned just now, that summary, I didn't have them up, but I'm going to say around a hundred. But for in East Ocean, you mentioned four hundred and plus in East Ocean. What's the summary of the balance of those, say, three hundred or other incidents that you recorded on?
So of the eight hundred and ninety, that's how many we had for all three townships.
Oh, okay.
Four thirty-three were in East Ocean.
Yes.
I'd say probably of the remainder, maybe three hundred were in West Ham and the remainder were in Thornberry. Thornberry doesn't have a whole lot of serious crime in it except for around the commercial neighborhoods. That's where we see a focus.
So all of the incidents then were criminal misdemeanor or criminal related investigations that you referred to earlier?
Yeah. These sheer numbers include everything. They include ambulance calls. They include everything from barking dogs, ambulance calls, to aggravated assaults if we have that.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to see the waters, so that's why I was just curious about the total number of the related cases that we wanted to come up with. Thanks.
And also our monthly activity report, I'm sure Michelle would show that with you, that breaks it down per township so that you can see exactly what the calls for service were.
Yeah, we're working on trying to get that summarized. So we're going to be in touch with you on that, to get that kind of a report. So we can...
We'll work here, we'll work here.
Thanks, Chief.
Something to add for that. I wanted to ask you specifically about the incident that happened over in Somnus, where there was a people, well, disclosure, my brother called. Because there was a people representative that came by after dark. He was probably within six, seven o'clock at night. And he did call, and told him to call, he got. And of course, he responded immediately. But can you tell us, how often does that happen? That you have people trying to, I think it was done during, it's a very scary situation because people would come around that way at night. And they couldn't have people truck that were traveling there.
My advice is if you have any doubt whatsoever that it's a legitimate solicitor, all the police. That's our job. We will get there. We will sort it out. We'll find out whether it's legitimate or not. The one thing, I'm trying to separate the three townships out. I believe that people are allowed to solicit up until either eight or nine in the social. Is it eight?
I thought it was eight.
I think it's eight for this township.
And then how often does that happen? You have to ask, like, do you have any idea how many calls you've gotten to go for something in that neighborhood?
We get a lot of, we used to get even more before the pandemic. We find that door-to-door solicitation is not as frequent as it used to be because people feel uncomfortable with the pandemic. They'll be in a door to a stranger. But we still do get solicitation calls and we take them very seriously because, you know, it could be a legitimate solicitor. But at the same time, if it's not, it shouldn't be up to you to have to sort that out. And we do site.
Right. And then the last question, my brother, that was, he wanted to ask about how you start keeping up with the neighborhood watch. That's something that he wanted with all the other districts.
We find that formal neighborhood watches aren't as successful as informal ones. And we find that most of our homeowners associations have at least an informal watch where if we find that there's a trend occurring in a neighborhood, we will reach out to the person who's responsible for their Facebook page, and we will use that information. The other thing that we tell people is that you have a camera registry. And we're also very active in neighborhood ring. So because we found that most of our residents use the ring cameras. So we're very active in those. If you want to register your camera, we know instantly if there's a crime. We go, we contact you, and say, hey, can you check your system and see if there's anything there regarding the crime?
So do you have any questions for the chief today?
I don't have any.
Anybody else have any questions, your team, the residents? Is it kind of like a converter still? I got no room to get that.
That would have converted that, right, Russ?
Yeah, is that still a big thing?
It's huge. We're having an enormous problem in the rapid area. And the thing is, as soon as we catch one individual or one ring, somebody replaces them because it's extremely problematic.
Is it more in business areas at night or?
We're finding that it's very mixed. They like to go after trucks and SUVs because they sit higher and it's easier to sit underneath them and quickly cut them off. So it's really more, they're looking for higher setting vehicles and they're looking for an area where they want to draw attention. So if you have a really quiet neighborhood that doesn't have a lot of lighting, that might be ideal. Other times, it might be easier to go to where there's a fleet. And if the one place that I can tell you that is frequently, it's automated repair places because the vehicles are sitting there from anywhere from one to three.
One more simple question. You mentioned about the ring. Do you see that something yourself comes up on a ring? If the false alarms, like the false alarm on the home security system, would be penalized?
Not, not, ring doesn't connect to us directly. What happens is, we will never access your surveillance cameras. We will only ask that you know about yours. So if we have a crime, we can reach out to you and say, hey, check it. And then if you choose to share it with us, we do. But no, rings, none of that shows up. We are not connected to anyone's surveillance or security cameras.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thanks, Chief.
Anything else?
No, thank you, Chief.
Madam Chair, we have the chief. Before, I will note that the solicitation ordinance allows solicitation on sweet sides until eight PM and on weak ends until six PM.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask Grant, if you don't mind coming up to give us, because you have the fire department.
So for the month of January, the Russian Fire Company had a total of four hundred and seventy-four responses. We had fifty fire calls, thirty-six fire police responses, and three hundred and eighty-eight EMS responses. The three hundred and eighty-eight EMS responses represents the largest monthly total we've ever seen before EMS. That was primarily driven to a large increase in responses in West Ocean Township, West Downtown. At Rose Town, and we saw a little bit of a jump in recovery out of district calls. That may be part of the healthcare issue in Chester County where other units are tied up and everybody's kind of covering each other's districts. A lot of payments are given, released from the hospital.
I've heard that there's sometimes a two to four hour delay at my hospital emergency room. It's a little crazy.
Anecdotally, I think the worst we've had is two hours and thirty minutes. Now, it could go today and, you know, they're running out in half an hour, you know, but it just depends on a lot of the behavioral health issues that they're, you know, the minority one to one. You know, that'll stretch as resources. We got a number of serious incidents. Really, the one notable one in East Ocean Township was an auto accident with a car on fire at two thirteen with Chester Room. I don't know what it's called. And one note that we have started staffing in the third, they want us there in the daytime to cover two periods. So, you know, we always have two employees staffed now. We have three rooms in time. Last month, I was asked to do a quick update on our subscription guide. So we mail our subscription guide at the end of November, right after Thanksgiving. We put it in mail so that people can start sending in their payments for our festival year that starts January. And there's two components to the fund drive. One is that individuals and families and seniors can purchase these EMS subscriptions. And we have different tiers based on what the household looks like. And then additionally, they can make a donation, a tackle donation on top of that if they so choose. So this information is our data from the end of January. And our second mailing, the reminder mailing is going in, actually, it's in the mail now. I'm sorry to interrupt you on that. But the end of January, the tackle donations were a little over fifty-seven thousand dollars, which is about eight-two percent of what we have budgeted as income from that solicitation. We expect to exceed that budget a little bit based on our experience over the last couple of years. And then for the EMS subscriptions, were about a little over two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, which is eight-three percent of our budgeted income for that.
And so how many households do they have?
Yeah, three thousand, three hundred and seventy households have responded.
No, I'm sorry, two thousand?
Three thousand, three hundred and seventy.
And that's what EMS?
That's what EMS. So the fires is a lesser number. I didn't look at that, but it's always like a piggyback. You know, somebody can buy the subscription and then, okay, I'll give you fifty dollars for that donation. Now, we sent out eighteen thousand solicitations. Those were to every single family resident, every apartment, every condominium. Our mail files, and our own district is about eighteen thousand. So it's about twenty percent return rate on the level that we sent out.
You're saying, you know, they're actually true?
No. Yeah, so they're very precise. And if we add five houses on the district, we're, you know, we're adding them. But it's pretty clear. That's where we are. The terms on the second mailing start to come in. So those numbers will trend up, and they'll flatten out by March or so, but that'll trickle in.
So do you have any other questions?
I just have one question, Ben. Thanks for being here. On that update, on page two, under the monthly update and key indicators, how do you look at percentages? The top line in the particular key indicators field there, it says patients treated two ninety-nine. And then it has patient sixty-five and over, and then EMS calls, this is billing, and then automated fire. And it gives percentages, seventy-five, forty-three, and forty percent. I'm not sure how percentages correlate to the total number of patients treated. Am I just misreading this? Am I just misreading this?
See, it says total patients treated, which would look like the total of the three lower line incidents, but they, that doesn't add up.
So, we ran 388 calls.
Oh, great. Okay, it says 299 here.
Yes.
Ah, I'm really.
Out of that, we transported.
Um, is there anyone, and then also questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Why don't you turn it over? I'm going.
Oh, I just want to thank Ray for bringing those up here since it's been a while. I appreciate it both, but. He had round, and it's a filing, and reading, but it misses the fire really. But 421 now, breakdown, right now, volunteer, full-time paid and part-time paid, so.
Okay, yeah. So, I just sent you the list. Active firefighters on our roster right now is at 62. That's split between Station 54 and Park Avenue and Station 66. We have 12 full-time firefighter EMTs. We have a pool of about 30 part-timers who are basically pre-DM, and we have open shift, they sign up. It's now firefighter, part-time firefighter EMTs and just part-time EMTs is what, you know, third. When you look at the hours that we staff, it's about 16 EMTs. It's like a full-time, the rest of it is stacked up like part-time. When you look at fire responses, it's about, in terms of man-hours, it's about 75, 25 volunteer versus. So, it's still predominantly volunteer for fire response. For EMS though, it's, it's the other way, predominantly, we're just got to find the EMS calls versus predominantly.
And so, you have that, that plenty volunteer.
Yeah. We've got a couple that are just error again, and we've got others that are, you know.
I had asked this question of Carmen. I know Carmen got me answered my question, and it's.
I passed it on to the annual chief and Grant, so Grant can.
Um, Carmen, so I asked Carmen, because I had a contact with him. Can you tell us, I don't know how the building tells how many incidents of administered blood栓 you had in this one?
That's the one that I got now. So, I researched the overdose. So, the overdose statistics include alcohol, those prescription drugs, opioids, all, all, all those together. In 2021, we had a total of 61 overdose responses and 22 of those were East Ocean County. And then in January, we had a total of nine responses and five of those were in East Ocean County.
And of course, you don't know the breakdown of those with, where, was an opioid, where Narcan could have come in.
That's going to require a little bit of data mining on our part. And Narcan usage as well with that. It's listed more as comment in the report as opposed to a checkbox.
Okay, is there a chance that you can help us?
No, I've got people working on it.
Lastly, I was wondering if I could ask you, are you interested in, with, with COVID, everything is shut down, so is COVID. And I don't know if you are open to, or whether you want a blood drive at this point in, in the facilities?
We have one on March 15th. And the house, our hall is not vital right now because of COVID, so the fire company is sponsoring a blood drive on March 15th. Somebody else.
Somebody else wanted to ask one. And so, who they contacted?
Is that something you put on our website or you just put on the east door?
I think that we should put the blood drive on there. Was it already filled out?
I haven't checked.
Is that something you, actually, good to do? I mean, you know, interface and.
Our secretary, Wes Smith, is really our cross contact. Check this out.
Signups.
Yeah, we, we, two or three, you know, I was two or three years ago.
Thanks, Grant.
Carmen, how are you going to follow that?
I did my job, though.
Yeah, you should have been. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Grant. Good evening, everybody. Grant did East Ocean, so I will simply do Melbourne and Good Fellowship. Melbourne had a total of 37 calls in East Ocean. 10 Basic Life and 27 ALS and Good Fellowship had 59. The percentages are staying about the same. So, if there are no questions on the reports, just to clarify, Michelle Truitt emailed me or texted me earlier today about the overdose of Narcan. I texted Gary Wivel, our ambulance chief, and I copied that. So, they'll work on it the best they can and get figures when they can. It was too early to do it, and for tonight, I'm sure. Feel free to contact me. I know the people to get to, which is typically the chiefs of RIN. If there are no question on the reports, if I could, go into concern I have on the boarding conditions. Generally, it's all over, but we are finding more and more in our township. And we had a terrible one in Ocean Valley a couple of weeks ago that involved a fatal that was pretty well just laying on the floor and covered with debris and so forth. I need to stress, I don't want to step on constitutional rights. We've had them for a reason. And I know we have a property maintenance code and the Department of Fields do them as they can to try to get people to dust them up and clean up. But I want to reiterate, I should have done it while Brandon's here. I want to reiterate the safety hazard to number one, me. Now, our EMS, who were the first people murmling inside, our firefighters who were possibly going in the building to put out a fire or something and enter into a condition that is portable, could have any, any kind of things floating around the air that will make us sick. More importantly, well, there's no more important thing than a life of firemen in my eyes, but more importantly, as important, if someone wants to kill themselves and they live in their house all by themselves on an acre of ground, I don't like that because all lives are, are very, very, very important. When you have a townhome or a condo where you have neighbors next to you, above you, below you, when people don't report something or don't say something, you can turn a, an individual hoarding call into a massive disaster that could potentially take not only the life of the person in question, but neighbors, again, on either side, on top, down below, firefighters, EMS, anybody getting near that location. Education, I think, might be something the township has to look at since we obviously don't have a lot of power to do things. There is a judicial, correct me if I'm wrong, judicial warrant. I've done. Administrative warrant, thank you. I have done one in my career here as fire marshal that we had no choice. And you basically go before the judge, and the judge pretty much gives you permission to do what you have to do. Normally, I think, most people might take direction between Department of Aging or the county or friends or something. But we have to know about them. And the only way to know about them is if somebody calls the township and reports something. The particular one I'm talking about in Valley Drive, obviously, if you lived next to, or on top of that unit, you knew there was a problem. That should make a call. I've been in contact with Ocean Valley Management. I want them to take it to their board and their, to their solicitor to see if there's anything they can do. A lot of the units are tenant occupied. Maybe the owners have to stuff up the nearly yearly inspection. You know, that, that's not, not a bad thing that they look at a piece of real estate, maybe look at them once a year and see what's going on. But I think East Ocean might want to play a pretty role in possibly looking at some education to help people. The resources available, resources available now throughout the Fed, county has a lot. I know Mark Gordon has worked along with codes, working with people as much as they can. But it seems to be getting worse. I don't know if the shutdown with codes had anything to do with it. But it's just starting to surface now and it is a really ugly, dangerous head. So, possibly the solicitor wants to maybe do a little homework along with the board to see what we can do to become more user-friendly with the condominium management and those type of arenas to get people to say something. You know, if you see something, say something. If it doesn't look right, it's not right. Same thing the feds told us during our problems with bombings and so forth. I wanted to bring it to the board's attention because it was a real scare that I have that one of my fellow firefighters or a neighbor of that person's will lose their life because of a hoarding condition or worse.
What's, can you define a little bit of the difference between, say, someone who's an avid collector versus a hoarder? We started to talk about the accumulation of whatever type of materials, and maybe there are some specifics. And then when you start to get into the potential for administrative warrant, that they're blocking emergency access or. Where do you delimit it? I mean, from somebody collecting 5,000 bottle heads versus newspapers from 200 years.
If you have 5,000 bottle heads, your place isn't going to have a foul order. Your exits are, are going to be completely blocked. You're not going to have clothing and debris three foot off the floor then. So, you physically have to walk over clothing to get to a facility or a bedroom. There's no way in absolute heck anybody could ever get out from one of these living conditions. It's everything from newspapers to trash to garbage to food, everything. If you, if you want to see something that strikes close home to me, there's a TV show my wife likes.
Of course.
All hoarders.
I've seen it on the screen. I haven't watched it.
You, you will see collectors that are pretty bad, but when you truly see a hoarder, there is not, there is no collection of, of anything that's special. And again, there's, every exit is blocked. You can't get in, you can't get out. You're virtually, again, stepping on two or three feet of debris, clothing, whatever it might be, to get into the unit, to get to a, to get to a balcony, to get to a bedroom, to get to a bedroom, you know, especially to get out. And when they catch fire, it would be the equivalent of taking a room and putting 10 gallons of gasoline in it and lighting it. You've got all that debris that's going to catch fire and it makes it an eternally bad fire. At a smoking condition, that could kill people two doors down.
So, it's a mental condition, really, that has a physical manifest to, to the dangerous point.
There, there. I don't want to use the term mental, but there, there definitely are some characteristics of hoarders. Including their personal dress and how they act. I, I'm not a psychiatrist. I can't make that call. So, I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. It's a big thing, solicitors here. Whatever we can do to work on this collectively, it would be really good for education from East Ocean residents and it might save the life down there.
Carmen, can you dispel that question, like, how many of the hoarding situations do you personally have contacted? And this, of course, doesn't mean. But just basically.
12 and 15.
About 15.
In East Ocean.
And those are only the ones you deal with?
They're only the ones I know of. We don't know about a lot of them unless we get a daily allowance call or some sort of an EMS service there. You could have, you could have as high as 100, 150.
And so, some of the things people should be looking for, when you say, it's, say, which is foul odor?
Foul odor, you look at the condition of, of the vehicles. If the vehicles have a bunch of, like, debris in it and so forth. On a single-family home, it's pretty easy because if you look at the outside of the home, you're going to see stuff piled all over the place. It's a pretty good indication that chances are the inside looks like the outside. In a condominium, because everything is inside of the walls, so to speak. The only way you can tell is by neighbors walking by. I'm not saying the street, but if the lines are open and you get in the loop in here, you see stuff three foot high, call the, call the management company. Let the management companies send, they can send the maintenance man over to at least check it out without even entering the unit. And if, if the, if the management company has enough of a suspicion, then they should contact the township.
If I made it, township does have a property maintenance code adopted. So, if there isn't a management company or if the management company does find an issue, they contact the code department. And there are mechanisms for the township to get involved as necessary.
But people have to, you know, things fall upon deaf ears and the management company, well, no one told me. Well, maybe the pass in the buck. I don't know. I don't have an answer.
Derek, were you aware of any situations?
I was not aware of some of the, well, the most recent one was, I think it was something about the outside. The property maintenance care that builds this, it really do. If there's no EMS involved with fire, it becomes very tough enforcement method. And I dealt with this in the past in a previous position. The legalities of getting administrative warrant, making sure you can go, you know, around the home. So, it is a process. If you have primary, I, I say effects, but if you don't have the primary to be there, such as a EMS call or a fire call, it becomes a little bit difficult to detect, but it's not impossible.
Could, could our nuisance code include hoarding as, with definition as a public nuisance bill? That, that, they've done that in California anyways.
We may already have it, but typically, the property maintenance code is more appropriate to remedy the situation.
More incising. I mean, you're going to, the property maintenance code is, you're able to access the property to the code, I understand.
And, and you can force them to clean it up, whereas in a nuisance, you can get an injunction to force them to clean it up, but it's much more difficult. Generally, nuisance is just a fine. The property maintenance code does have a lot of provisions that force to clean up and then fine if they do. But if you look at, and I think if you look at 95% of the enforcement for property maintenance goes to outside. Absolutely.
But you can just see them.
Absolutely, but, but I, I have, I have seen, I mean, not from the door, they answer, you see past, it probably is a problem, yeah.
Perhaps you should have that more reported, report on how many situations we've got.
Yeah, they certainly do a lot of them. It's back and, but.
Just so you know, we do have a method of listing with the county. It's called the update, updated county, which I send in for this particular one. The county EMS keeps a log of hoarders, an active record with the county. So, if an ambulance is dispatched after that fact, it'll show up on the screen on mobile radio because of privacy matters. So if an ambulance is dispatched after that fact, it'll show up on the screen on the mobile radio because of privacy matters. But it, all of our own computers and our trucks and ambulances have notes that we can see. But it has to be seen first to be entered with the county. Once it's entered with the county, it now is registered for any EMS or any fire safety person coming. But it's just like the one we're talking about, it was a call that, that brought the whole thing over.
Derek, do you have any questions for Carmen? I don't think it's sleeping. But it wouldn't be as far as just telling us that. Carmen, have you got?
Thanks, Paul. All right, enjoy your evening. Thank you. Stay safe, everybody.
Carmen, will you get me the notes that the county has on me if I can get a chance?
Oh, I can't, I can't. Too long.
We're just going to need to take a certain code, call that back.
Good night, all.
Thank you. I'd be happy to one hundred and fifty.
All right, thank you. All right. So move on to the financial report, Dean.
Thank you. The, uh, as of January 31st, had passed through the general fund revenues of $16,066,000. Expenses $719,275 for a deficit of $323,609. As of January 31st, general fund balance was $5369,78,000. Uh, so one month in the year, um, your overall platform budget, we were 5% lower than prior year. As far as expenses go, our, our actual revenue is driving for us to finish 72% higher than budget, 76% higher than prior year. Um, driven by high monthly VIT collections as well as commercial real estate transfers. Overall, the net result was, uh, 37% improvement favorable to budget and 43% favorable of course to prior year. Um, that sounds great. We're, we're going to hold our breath and wait until we get another month, then another two months in. Um, I'm going to start tracking this on a monthly basis, uh, just like this to get an updated retention after our first quarter and be sure we're tracking towards our budget expectations. Uh, and we, another note is our 2021 audit concluded. Um, I'd like to thank my staff, Chris, Bart, Kelly, as well as Susan for, uh, for making it such a smooth, or an audit rather than a pain, painless process. Now they found, um, very good board oversight and some of the minutes had conversations with us about our internal controls. And they found that they didn't look very good. They had their concerns whatsoever.
Yeah, good report. That's a good one. Hasn't been in the past, but the yearly checkup, not a good one.
Okay, and, uh, as far as the minutes are concerned.
I have a question about the.
I'm sorry.
The operating reserve fund showing the $784,000.
That was transferred this month.
Yeah.
It was transferred at the beginning of February, so it doesn't show on the January 4th.
Correct. Okay, thanks.
You'll see on the treasurer report I had.
Yeah.
And, uh, a little thing added for.
I knew you were going to ask that.
I didn't do that.
I was missing as to asking the other questions. I'm sorry about that. Derek, do you have any questions about that finance report?
Good job on the team with the audit. It's a good job, Chris and Dave and everyone else. I think that's, I hope you had a good work.
Thanks, Derek.
And we didn't run them to the minutes of January 25th of ABC planning session. Uh, does anybody see any collections here? Like, you know?
No, it's an extensive set of notes. That's, that's a good report. If Rick, uh, if, if folks that are listening, um, and, and here, uh, when we do, we do this annual ABC Advisory Board and Commission Planning Session in January each year to have a reflection of, um, the goals that they, that, uh, that they tried to accomplish. Each of the, the commissions, advisory boards, parts and wreck, historical, et cetera, done from the prior year and then their goals for the new year. And, uh, we have, you know, good interchange and, and shared comments. And it's a great summary these minutes to get a sense of what occurred with the ABCs this past year and where they want to be this, this coming year. So if, if you review one set of minutes, uh, this is a really good one. Uh, I think that this set of minutes is about 12 pages long, so it has some, some really good information about what each of the ABCs have been doing and plan to try and do.
I'd carry my promotion and we accept the minutes of the 25th as recorded.
Thank you, or second?
I'll, I'll second.
I'll break that.
Hold on for a second, thank you. Um, so there are no comments or changes at this time, as seen by the board. I've been comes with questions from the residents. None at this time, so I'm going to call the question then to, uh, vote for the, to cast the minutes into the record. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. If you want to, treasurer for court.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so the general fund expenses for this period include our monthly EGO, these building payments, um, insurance premiums paid, snow material was purchased, equipment rental, monthly pension contributions, and the annual fee for the SBC debt. Uh, general fund revenues in this period were driven by taxes pretty much exclusively, uh, as well as the contest cable franchise revenue and parts and wreck and class registration, which I think we wrote some records on. It was out for it.
Hmm, we wrote it.
Yeah, so to say. Our capital reserve fund, $50,000 expenses for purchase of the dam destruction and $9,000 for replacement site discharge, all of the bucket, which I haven't seen on the website, very poor. I did transfer $112.5 million from the operating reserve fund into the infrastructure sustainability fund. Through the 2023 question. Uh, any questions?
Uh, yeah, I have, I have one that maybe you can clarify this. Um, Dave, uh, it's listed here as batch two or three, page two, and then there's, um, related to it, I believe, is batch two or three, page six. Um, the first one on page two is the DNET, uh, refers to, I'm not sure if it's five year service or whatever for a thousand dollars. Uh, I, I guess that's the new service that we have with our email transition. But then we have, um, I thought there was another one that came here on page six about, um, seat, seat trust or something.
Yeah, so, so they.
Not, they're not overlap or which, I mean, it's just part, or it's, it's part of the overlap with the.
It's close. It said DNET is our internet provider, um, so that's all our email accounts. And we actually added more, um, and it's now, this one period is a thousand dollars due to this email migration.
Right.
And the migration itself is performed by C trust.
Ah, so they did the actual technical work.
There are my C project manager working with, uh, part of the NFA compliance for outside or something.
The new email, um, format, I don't know how everybody feels. It seems pretty good. It's a little, a little more responsive, at least it might try to be, especially with the iPhones though, so. But it, I, it's quite pretty smooth then. Uh, but I decided to ask about this.
Yeah, a while back, we, we started there, we did through our contact. One of them's still, I think a little bit more in money for that, but considering the financial software going in and all of the other, um, things are happening technology wise, especially with the hybrid room here.
And then the other one I had was, uh, happened to be on, uh, oh, I didn't break down the page, but it has to do with Brain One Valley SPCA collection. Uh, the total this month is a high of 1,960 plus dollars. Uh, my question is, uh, were any of those identifiable that you can invoice the owners with or they?
No, this includes the annual fee.
Ah, never mind. That's why it was higher. It was at that contract. Oh, never mind.
And then there was two incidents in my.
Oh, okay.
I'm still waiting on them all. I checked every one.
Uh, so then I guess we can, uh, enter to motion.
I'll move to authorize it, um, the, uh, essentially, uh, we, uh, virtually accept a receipt and approve the expenses that presented in the expenses register and that summarize.
A second.
Thank you. And I'm looking for the questions from the board. Are there any questions from the residents? With 10 people, there's, this is right, 10, 11? 11. Um, so I'm going to go with that. Those in favor, please, thanks, Bill.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that's real. And, uh, moving on to old business, whether considered grant application for the pickleball court construction.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is just a continuation, uh, Jason, my, uh, parking rec director was here last month asking for the board to okay and fill forward with the, uh, conversion of a portion of the, uh, existing multi-surface court to a pickleball slash tennis court. It would be, um, essentially, I think, the number is still in the, I think it would be the pickleball courts and the tennis court. Um, and this is just a, uh, basically allowing them to go forward with the preservation partnerships program, brand program, which is, uh, through the county. So, uh, they're, we're requesting $60,000 for grant and then we're matching that, um, for a total of $120,000. But for now, we have the estimate at the high end of the project. So this is again, just, uh, authorizing Jason to be able to, to, this application, we just do February 15th.
That's great. You have a weather, you've done our, our dollars with, um, that, our, uh, public, uh, grants. So, uh, I, Madam Chair, I would move that they'll be authorized for Chester County PPP application to support the pickleball tennis court renovation project to, uh, to lead the amount of $60,000 and $64,000 in local money.
Take the motion. Good, thank you. All right, so is there any discussion or questions?
I have a couple. Um, first of all, uh, are we insured of getting the grant for, uh, we want to hook that on here to 20,000 dollars?
I, I never say grants are insured.
Right.
So I, I, you know, I, I would say that with Jason's grammar and skills and, um, what this is used for, I, I feel confident.
That's a good shot, isn't it?
I can, I can chime in on that as well. I love the incident that, um, the woman who's in charge of the grant, please pickleball herself.
Well, the budget, Dave, are the budget finished?
Basically, I'm on it, yeah, because, um, the $9,500 in 2023.
Okay.
And we're not approving the, the project.
Bid or anything. Just to, just to, just to apply for a grant. If we get it, great, and then the conversation less, less complicated. If we don't get the grant, then we've got more, more to worry about.
You'll have to put a check in. All right, so we have a motion, um, and no further discussion from the board. Are there any questions regarding grant application for the residents? No, I would say none.
Madam Chair, just briefly, this, this packet doesn't include a resolution as well. Uh, so just make sure that everyone's aware that, uh, in order to submit this grant, you need a resolution and that should be incorporated in the motion. I, I don't think you need to state a motion or anything.
Ah.
Uh, but it should be publicly stated that there's a resolution in that.
So then a friend of the amendment?
I would be to authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the board.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that comment.
And John, second, uh, that's a thing.
So we have to vote on the amendment and then vote on the final, or just vote on the.
There is no vote on the original, so.
There is a vote on the original, so, um, I'll call the question, the vote on the original request and the amendment. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tony?
Aye.
Thank you.
Bill, thanks for pointing out.
No votes. Thank you very much. All right, move on to the business. Um, so I'm going to turn this over to Derek in a moment for the discussion on the preliminary trail, alternative proposal. And keep in mind, this is only a preliminary discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, in absence of our TVs fully functioning yet, we're still in the setup, uh, both our new conference room system. I'm going to put some part copies of this map in that table if anybody's interested. So essentially, we, we did this back in the fall, the board had authorized, uh, what we would call the feasibility study to do an alternate route. Uh, and when I say alternate route, I mean, an alternate route from the original segment B. Uh, segment B started in front of the, uh, Goshen Corporate Park and continued through the, uh, referred to in the documents of the Hicks Park. And then continue over to segment A, which is actually complete at this time. So again, we had this conversation about this feasibility study for an alternate segment B. Uh, I started working with our engineer, Benoni. We had some preliminary discussions about different routes of, you know, various, various ways through or near the corporate park in order to possibly connect up to Goshen Parkway. And the reason we were, uh, aiming for Goshen Parkway was West Goshen Township has a comprehensive plan, um, and a trail plan, whether they act on it or not, I, I will leave it up to that. But, um, they, they have a trail that, in the comprehensive plan, that pops out of Ford Avenue, which is up that way off of Airport Road. So we thought a little alternate route would be somewhere around Corporate Center over to Goshen Parkway. This is the first time presenting this in public, the first time discussing this in public. Um, after some individual feedback from board members, uh, on specific routes of what could be an alternate route. Uh, this is what I decided to, to show in public, uh, at the preliminary discussion with individual board members. So what we have here is we have two, essentially two separate trails, uh, that go to the same destination. We have segment C continued, so essentially segment B, um, continues down to the front where it currently is off of, off of Haley Bright. And then it goes straight back, um, to a certain point. C1 dot two dash two, meanders a little bit over to the flood plain, over a little bit more, um, into, uh, one Hicks property. I believe that is, uh, Wood, Bill, Woodness. And goes straight back to the back of the Hicks property, transitioning out to what's called the pinch point here, onto eventually Gerson Parkway. Uh, the first, the first route, C1 dot one, is a little bit more incorporated into the, uh, Goshen Corporate Park, utilizing some existing impervious surface through the parking lot. Um, so they said probably, uh, a little bit more to be involved from a financial perspective. Um, although I gave these two different routes, you know, obviously we don't have any, you can see how we have gotten to that point, um, of any kind of negotiations or discussion. But this essentially gives you two routes. One, I think a little bit more nature or natural setting, uh, and the other one trying to stay a little bit more to the, to the corporate park. Those of them have to go back into the Hicks property that crosses into Goshen Parkway. The one thing I will stress, and I don't think I mentioned this to any board member yet, but, um, because we're going off of Haley Bright and I don't know if board members thought we could be avoiding any sort of state permitting because of that. Um, unfortunately, you know, we're looking at a lot of flood plain here and you can see the dash lines are, where a boardwalk would go versus any kind of concrete cap. Um, DP would be involved in any kind of construction, uh, such as this. You also have the erosion sediment permitting, so this would be a fully permitted state project. I'm sure the board would love to hear that, uh, but that, that's just the reality of where we are and that's how the rest of the trail was constructed as well under state permitting. So, uh, again, very, very preliminary, you know, uh, I, this is the first time I'm, I'm putting it in the public and, well, I know the board that sit here tonight and change this up and that's fine, but I feel like we have, we've been discussing this for a while. We, we put this feasibility idea out there, so I. We, we put this feasibility idea out there, so I had to put something out that had, had the conversation started, and, uh, that's what I'm doing here.
Great, um, can you tell us, do you know how much the engineering costs for the?
Very, very preliminary discussions about that, yeah, so again, looking at, not doing a full cost analysis. He thinks that we can settle a hundred thousand dollars to be related in here at the time and such. Was it free hot? I'll say three hundred thousand.
Don't, don't, don't fix on that too much.
Yeah, and then, um, do you have any estimate from them as to the cost of the trail as it's presented this evening? What it could potentially cost us? Management engineering included for segment C?
Stormwater management, uh, is not completed in segment C or four segments.
So there's the existing segment C that we have, you know, the concrete of Haley Bright, that we need to have stormwater management engineering done?
Whatever we, yes, whatever we incorporate as far as necessary stormwater, and for this particular segment, we, we should incorporate the fact that segment C did not have, uh, the necessary stormwater.
Okay, and then, um, segment C actually is part of Haley Bright, so it's a Penn dot project, so we could use the van or we could use the van. So our choices are limited as to if one would be able to use, so we'd have to go through Penn dot for the project.
Yeah, that doesn't necessarily mean we need to use the van.
Okay.
I mean, it would be, I mean, they have the most experience with the trail, so obviously if they're talking about that, we're just, uh, using this way of doing. Possibly, you're not, you're not being able to.
All right, um, so, um, I, I still have concerns about this particular direction. And I'm still willing to say that I feel the door through the corporate park is going to be our best option because we already have previous surface, you know, we've got stormwater runoff management, um, and engineering costs for to deal with that trail. It, it would cost a lot less money for us to go through the corporate park, where that price drive and using the inner, inner part of the circle, because you're, that's a township stream. So we own that and we maintain it, so we, despite that, it's always described for the world to know.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Before I continue, like, I forgot to mention this, but this is the, the sheet I gave you, that was double sided, which maybe you probably figured out already, but just so everybody's clear. There's, there's a little bit of a, there's a view that's a little bit narrow and then we kind of rule it out so you can see the context of it.
Now, this is, we're also talking about, this is a multi-year project, if we would, if we pay attention to the, this will be multi, it's going to be multi-granny.
It's going to be multi-granny, but this is more of a multi-year versus going to the corporate side. And just so everybody's aware, you know, discussing with Benonia was discussed on the Corporate Center. So obviously nothing's on the table. You guys are the policymakers, you decide. But, uh, it would be, I think we estimated it would probably cost, you know, forty to fifty percent by scale on that route because, um, of the existing route that they're taking now. I think the way I wanted to present tonight was, was so because it is a little bit more of a trail feel, which, um, like, you know, I wanted to start with, so.
Those were the only things I wanted to point out.
I, I also want to mention the floodplain map, uh, that is here, um, you know, floodway, a hundred year floodplain, two hundred year floodplain. Those are very important in the calculation of the map itself. And as you can see, you know, the boardwalk versus this regular concrete path, which is, because the cost of, where it's well. C one dot two obviously has a lot of good law, uh, that's something for the board to consider as well.
Okay.
Uh, Pat, share, don't mind, I'm interjecting, share something, share it, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Derek, you said for, like, Paul's got very much, uh, he said that the preliminary to go through, the texture boardwalk to go through, what, three hundred thousand ballpark in, and you're called, so you said?
Well, well, both of these, sorry, I gotta learn these things too much. Uh, so, uh, both of the, the C one dot one and C one dot two, uh, you know, we're estimating design costs around the same, so several hundred thousand dollars, whether it's two fifty, three hundred. You know, that's also based on.
For both together, or for individual one?
Um, whatever one we pick. I mean, th- th- these are only.
I got it.
Yeah, these are, these are only, you know, either or options. And some of that's based on, I don't know the board does, how much the board does. Segment, the segment B was already designed, in conjunction with segment A. So I think the design costs for those segments, uh, combined were almost seven hundred thousand dollars. So if you split that in half, which segment B was a, a bigger portion, so we were looking at three fifty right there, so you can kind of guess that the design work's going to be somewhere, I mean, what, me, Klein and I had discussed in the last couple days.
Okay, Jim?
All right, Derek, the, the proposal that, um, Michelle just made, uh, isn't marked in this map, right?
It is not.
Um, is, is that, uh, a less expensive proposal, uh, as far as the engineering is concerned?
I mean, the construction in here would be, would be less expensive than this grant, correct? We don't, I don't have a number for it, but it would be.
Yeah, I understand.
At this point, what I'd like to see is the fact that it endures. Estimate of C one point two, C one point one, and, uh, over to the, uh, the, uh, of, um, you just, you know, not committing anybody to anything, but I think it could be thoroughly significant. My thought is that C one point two, which would be a, a really nice, you know, seeming a trail-like trail. But the boardwalk, easily you can self-perform, I think, from that work, with a public works, with, with all the permitting, what's intended to be after, not.
Yeah, and, and just to bring you back to, we're, we're writing on the van written house. When you have, when you have state permitting like that, you'll, you have to have basically an engineer on air as a project manager, so that, this would be, you know, similar type. So even if we did it in house, unfortunately, I would have to say this, ask it out of home, kind of.
I was going to stop with, acquire easements through, um, either Mr. Fitzgerald's property to go back toward the, using the cereal property. So for Mr. Fitzgerald's property, uh, we'd have, we'd have to acquire easement, you know, that could cost us, you know, another zero, there might be thousands of dollars. Um, depending on who you plan with your values on.
This play, I mean, Bill and I would be working together after this play, we would, we're here.
And so if I can, let's see, to do that.
Um, one of the points, um, that appears to me, um, is that, um, the, the route that Michelle is going to, I'll call that C three for one of the, um, is already paved, uh, a good part of the way. And it would seem that we could, um, not only save some money using that good, uh, perhaps more, um, well, more pleasantly, uh, we could save some time. And, um, if we use that already existing, with that part of it, um, we may be able to finish the project.
Then there could be some ways to kind of can, to, 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 and sign and, uh, you know, plantings and whatever, to make it more, um, a sense of place going, going through that on a trail like that, I think that would be something.
I, I don't know what your schedules are like, but I would like to try and drive that route, maybe a couple of hours. Um, I, we normally ask Mark Miller, but obviously we didn't do that.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, that might be a way to go, and, and, well, I'll, and, and see how it looks.
Uh, a couple of comments, John?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, first of all, to folks that are listening, uh, and can hear tonight, um, this is a first block. And as, as was referenced earlier, this is going to be a long conversation. When we talk about quicker or sooner, we, we were talking multiple years here by the time it's done. I, I don't expect to be on the board by the time this thing is actually affected. But it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a really good alternative to the, the impasse that we've had, which is really positive. To construct a trail that's meaningful, um, continuous and potentially connected with, with our neighbor, West Goshen, is, is Derek alluding. So any, and any costs that were mentioned tonight completely soft-stuck, we're, we're on a waste on it. We will be pursuing grants, the grants that we've had through section B, uh, apparently will be moot. And we will have to go out for new grant money, hopefully we'll be successful, um, but we don't know that. That takes time, uh, to get into various grant cycles. The one thing I wanted to say, I agree with, with the comments about the corporate park, um, as being possibly the most viable and practical, um, alternate. But to come to a, a point that was just made about, um, recognizing the, along the wetlands and the stream, a more trail-like natural feel. What I would really like to see, if we go through the, we go through the corporate park, instead of using the existing cartway of the park to keep it a real trail, to separate it from the cartway by using within the right of way of the cartway in the, in the corporate park, the paved, paved road. Creating the trail in a grassy portion, so it's separate from the traffic lane, um, and it, it creates a different feel. And, and there's, there's a cost element there, but, um, I would like to see that as, as a consideration by the board. I think that would be more of a trail feel, understanding we're going through a development in the form of a corporate park. That would at least, and from the safety standpoint, maybe a, uh, from my standpoint, a, a more trail-like feel, uh, and amenity for both pedestrians as well as bicyclists. I also just want to comment, uh, about easements. We haven't had conversations, uh, formally with any of the, 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 uh, folks that could be involved here, any of the property owners. So that's a whole series of discussions as well. So there's, there's a lot to do in this, but, you know, as, as the board, we wanted to begin to air this out, let people start to hear about it. Uh, there'll be comments that will come from this meeting, I expect, and maybe to, just tonight as well, from those few that are here. But this is an early, well, first blush, early conversation of many, many to come with this project. But I think it's a, it's a, it's a good start, and I'm, I'm really pleased the board were able to kick this off.
I like the idea of the parallel trail to the walkway, but there's so many, you know, as, everyone probably knows that we have a, a part of that for pedestrian walking. And also access from, um, industrial road down to the trail, there could be a, a step area to access the trail and park. So it's, it would be consistent with our, our goal of considering enhancements to the, uh, to the industrial park area, the, um, and I, I like that idea.
I would, yeah, the park, where there's parking already in place, and I'm sure that, um, the business owners don't care much, on the weekends especially, that their parking lots make it a little bit more use of.
So that was one of my questions, is if, if we, if we want a, a group that involves a parking lot, would we need to get, uh, because I think you have to have, uh, seven day weeks parking, it's a wonderful kind of, um, agreement that we have to have with families rather than just going in and.
Right, and just using any parking.
Yeah.
And, and that's something that we probably can look at when we talk with, um, the community landlords about easements and that, because different people owners are parking lots. And many of the people might be more willing to allow their spots to be the last.
We'd also have to check if there are hard orders, so depending on the usage, there's massive seven spots for that particular usage. So that comes into play, so I don't know if anyone had that, but.
No, you're right. It looks like these parking lots are sufficiently sized that you could be okay with minimum parking requirements, but with public use of applied parking laws, some other issues for property owner liability, insurance concerns, so that would certainly be something we'd have to look at with the property owner as we're negotiating.
There's a trend right now in, in planning to reduce the applied parking space for square footage and commercial buildings, and, you know, anyone needs any evidence that our ordinances and everybody else's ordinance were out of whack, all, all you need to do is look at the, the empty parking lots, uh, in the industrial park or go over to Home Depot or look at the lot, you know, they were hired by ordinance and no one ever used them because the ordinance was out of whack with actual usage. And, uh, something that we ought to look at going forward, as far as the minimum parking requirement for square footage and retail in the town, because we're trying to do that now, we're kind of behind the, behind the.
So, uh, well, it's not the head, but so what are our next?
Uh, I kind of like David's, I kind of like David's suggestion, for the blue side, but I kind of like David's suggestion of maybe an authorization or work, you know, to do some sort of cost analysis back in there for these two suggestions, plus adding third one there through the Corporate Center, uh, which we had discussed, uh.
That's, I mean.
I agree with that, but, uh, I'd love it if you put time in.
Well, I, I just want to remind everybody that we didn't put anything in the budget as far as Haley Bright trail concerns. Currently, we spent thirty-three thousand dollars more from the modern fund than we originally allocated. So, I don't know, what had it built since, maybe it's, uh, three thousand dollars, so.
Well, I, yeah, that, that has to, I was getting at with the motion, but John, to your point, I think a cost analysis I'm talking about, I mean, we probably will be able to have it by March fifteen.
Well, that's, that's what I, I want to point out to David tonight, is, um, it's, as far as I'm concerned, this is an infrastructure, I agree. Will matter, and I think we have infrastructure.
Well, um, let me, um, let me, uh, comment on that one, John. I, um, putting that one just aside for a minute, we, we just last month, uh, worked on a distribution of the surplus, of dollars that we had fortunate with the way our budget performed last year. And we allocated, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh.
Now it works.
We, we, earlier this month, we reallocated our, um, surplus from our, our twenty-twenty-one budget in the general fund to various funds, including some going back to the general fund. And I'm wondering whether, within the confines of either the general fund or the capital fund, where I think we also put funds, the, if we could do, and bills, we come into play, whether we could do a budget amendment to, uh, reallocate some of those funds, um, to this project for the, what I'll call the soft costs that we're going to have going forward in twenty-two. Uh, before we touch the, uh, uh, anything associated with this new infrastructure sustainability fund.
Yeah, the infrastructure sustainability fund.
How do you define?
Yeah, that's meant for, um, the, um, repairs, the infrastructure, I think, I don't think it's, it's perfect, whether it's on a new project, but, um, the new, developing new infrastructure, the new infrastructure, you've obviously become part of the maintenance that we need to be able to do in the future.
We're talking about taking them out of this pocket instead of this pocket.
Right.
But it's all, I'm not.
True, but, but the infrastructure sustainability, on those one forty unforeseen circumstances, or those that maybe we talked about relative to pond stewardship that we're rebuilding, some of the ponds, the stormwater pond facilities that we own, and other unforeseen, um, uh, infrastructure that we do not capitalize, like roads and some of the stormwater features that, um, you don't, you don't put money aside to depreciate or waste that asset to, to, to punish it though, with the, when we have to replace it to make a repair. So it's got a little different feel, that's why I thought, it is, it is a little bit of that back and forth, but the general fund, I mean, we, we had some extra money there to, I think, we allocated for at least this year before we talk about the budget for next year, or we, maybe, maybe try to add some drill dollars, uh, where they're going to come from.
Yeah, so we don't get any from wrong, but they, they want to run that ten percent increase number, is that correct? Uh, well, the first three months of the year are, are a little tricky, uh, after this election, we have the opportunity to reopen the first forty-five days. On the forty-fifth day, so we're not going to do that. Um, so, so we've got another six weeks or so, where we'll find a lock-in to the budget that we have right now. But if we need to make a change, a big adjustment at that time.
I think it's worth, I think it's worth.
to work a cost analysis on, cost analysis on the discussed outstanding.
Which would be preliminary engineering or construction.
I still move.
I'm guessing for everything.
Okay.
Okay, John.
There we go, thank you very much.
Matt, you may ask one more question associated with the.
With regard to the, we're seeing the need for easement. And rolling this out today, there are property owners that may fear about this conversation tonight, and they go, oh, this move. They may be coming up for an easement. Is there a right timing to kind of get in touch with them directly and say, we are looking at all of the trail, and we may be, you know, very interested to talk with you? Is that too preliminary at this point in time? I don't want to disrespect the property owners who may be looking at that for something like this, and having, getting back with it with them coming down and saying, yeah, we're keeping the last note. We're going to.
Just thoughts from my colleagues.
I would see a lot of eyes.
Don't your way.
So ultimately, you have no obligation to do so. You have no obligation at this point to address the property owner. Because you don't know what you're going to do.
Sure, I understand.
And frankly, you guys know these property owners better than I do at this point. It doesn't appear to be all that many properties that will get messaged, so I'm not sure it will be all that difficult.
It only takes one property to be difficult.
That's true. I mean, the outreach wouldn't be difficult, what you get back.
I actually know.
So it could certainly, it could certainly help the process going forward, and maybe help you get a better cost estimate as well, if you do have some of those little complications. This is just my personal, not legal, but I think regardless of our allocation. I think we need to pick a route before we start having this conversation. That's my thing.
Okay. I just wanted to push it up with respect to the community.
So we have a motion on the table, and there are a few further questions from the board. Because now that we have a motion, we need to open it up to the public discussion. Are there any questions from residents at this time?
Russ, come on up.
I'm sure you're in the minority.
Russ, your comments regarding the motion.
The motion is to allow Derek to work with the nominee to do a back-end look, cost analysis of the various trail options, not on the trail themselves.
You could ask those questions after, but on the motion specifically.
That's fine. That's fine.
The one thing, the one thing I did want to add to that, I have to say, when we get this analysis back, the biggest thing I've been concentrating on is the differences of prices for these routes versus the specifics of the price, if that makes sense. So you're going to see differentials here, and that's, I think, what we should focus on.
All right, so if there are no questions regarding the cost, but there is a question. So you know, this guy comes to work down.
Oh, Dan.
Fourteen thirty.
We tried to stick to the rules of our household, so I didn't see these maps until they were published. One of the things I noticed on there, I wanted to make sure that you're all aware of, I kind of mentioned Michelle this afternoon, but there is already a plan in place for an access road from the back end of Lindon Lane up to the, up to Goshen Parkway. I can see that reflected on the plan, and that could say, because you've already got money allocated, I believe, on that project, if you can get it to there.
Well, that's a good point, Dan.
Yeah, it was discussed. My feeling on it initially was that the board may not want to deal with that many property owners to get to that access, but something we did.
It looked like one line on your map there was parallel to where that ended up.
So that's a thing.
And I'm not a hundred percent sure what the final path to that access road from Lindon Lane, but at one point, people was talking about it running across Diagonal Lane, and then it ended up going straight up the hills. But I think you're hearing that.
So it could affect the cost.
Well, I hope so. Well, I think this too.
I think you can save some money.
Nice.
Thanks, Dan. So here's the, who's going to start here?
I'm sorry, yeah, I thought you meant there was another access road down. That's what I said. That was.
That's.
Not a good idea. Pull the way down.
Here's where that access road.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's got to be considered.
That means to where?
So no questions regarding the cost.
What are the authorizations?
Authorization. Call the question, those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any votes, Dan? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to a lot of the discussion of West Whiteland's comprehensive plan update. And Derek, you know.
Yes, this is, it's pretty standard for a municipality when they have a comprehensive plan update, to have to reach out to the neighboring municipalities and receive input.
Required.
Yeah, input if any on their comprehensive plan. So myself, Mark Gordon, we didn't see a conflict. The area we have with, where we share with West Whiteland is not in the vein of what they're calling, you know, passing crossroads and up in that area where it's very commercial. Our border is very low density residential with West Whiteland. So we renewed and we had really had your comments, so we're recommending that we support West Whiteland efforts, so member that needs plan.
Madam Chair, I'll move that the board should support West Whiteland's comprehensive efforts to amend their home use plan and not within the comprehensive plan and authorize the countermeasure to that effect. And I don't think that plan, if you teach here, twenty-eight hundred feet and started to develop, so there's literally no impact of it.
And I'll just give the second one.
Oh, second motion.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
What happened?
Toby, you have any questions regarding this?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, okay. So this really has no effect on our township whatsoever. Are there any questions from anyone in our audience this evening? Okay, we'll call a question then, those in favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
And thank you, Ross White.
Thank you. Next up is a discussion for Hershey Mill Villages' request for trails for the discussion part of Alcott Circle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the, I only played trail discussions preliminary, this is very, very, very preliminary. We essentially just received this request from Hershey's Mill Villages Management. They would like to, and the maps here attached, but essentially, they would like to come out of Hershey Mill Villages, create, construct a trail along a portion of Chester, North Chester Road, three fifty-two, and do the three fifty-two from middle cross, middle road across essentially over to Alcott Circle. And the reason for that is, Alcott Circle has an existing trail at the end of the cul-de-sac that eventually provides access to our parkway. So again, this is, this is just seeing what the advocate is for the board to even consider us moving forward. If the board were to want to take a look at this, obviously, we'll get the neighbors involved pretty close. I mean, I'll probably contact them this week or next week if we go forward with this. Because we have to start them involved. So this is just for the special purposes only, and the board has to say.
I spoke to Ed McCall, who of course I know very well yesterday and today. And the, it's an interesting proposition. I need to connectivity and trails, and we're talking about that, and arms and extensions. Hershey's Mill Villages were, through the master association, were great with us with working out the emergency access over to Cornwallis Drive. We've got good cooperation there. The indication on this memo is that Cornwallis Drive might not, an emergency access, might not be the best way that the property owners here are to gain easements should be emergency access, may not be amenable to it. But I don't think we should write that one off yet. I think that one option, we should at least be able to engage the property owners. Hold on, it would only take one to say they weren't interested, but there could be benefits to the property owners as well. I mean, we've got a very solid population of residents at Hershey's Villages, at Hershey's Mill. Of course, it would work both ways, the residents along Cornwallis could have access there and come into the villages and enjoy access of walking and riding your bikes. But it might enliven that area, bring, you know, more presence with a very stable population there, could be a good thing, as long as that cul-de-sac is for Cornwallis Drive, so there could be some positives there.
You're talking about Cornwallis or Alcott?
Or, well, not Alcott, but Cornwallis.
Okay.
It's not.
And so on that one, I think we should at least engage the residents, and they would have difficulty to make sure they're amended easement. On another, the other access route where they would come out of essentially the east gate of the villages of Hershey's Mill and proceed with a trail along the cartway of three fifty-two. Initially, I, yesterday, talking with Ed McCall, I said, gee, I like that, picked up literal on there, it's not the greatest, but there's enough isolation that if you built a trail, it could be harmonious with that and safe. And you bring it up as far as Alcott Lane and bring it across. A crossing the state road, permitting, the design requirements that kind of would have, it would probably ultimately require flashing signs on either side, but on striking. Pretty, I talked to Ed McCall today, and I said, you know, I don't know the prices on those, but that would be pretty pricey. So that would be something for the master association and the villages to consider, if that were to occur, as well as the design costs, et cetera. And then I asked him whether or not a more direct route off of Chandler Drive to intersect through the wooded area, which would be east of, I forget the name of the village, and Murfield Village could work, understanding the spray application field is in there. So that way, a trail could go directly through the woods and intersect essentially, still need a crossing of three fifty-two, but intersect directly with Alcott instead of having a trail going along three fifty-two. And he said that was problematic, it was apparently discussed, the interference with the spray irrigation field for the mill sewer association and the plant could be an issue, and the DDP might get involved with that, and I'll be like, please. So it is, it's a commendable effort, but I think it is a, it's a bit uphill at this point, and I'd like to at least see what the folks along Cornwallis Drive have given the easement thing.
What would happen along Cornwallis Drive? Would people walk and bike on the road itself?
On the road that was created there, yeah, that would.
No, I don't mean the strip, but I mean.
Oh, then they would come in along Cornwallis and then make their way over, I guess, back over to, where would it go, their way towards.
Colonia.
Right, toward the Colonia. And then make their way down to Bailey Park. I guess that would be around.
You would probably be able to use the road, right? I don't know if you'd be able to get all of those people to give you the right of way on the property.
Well, if they were just to use the road, they wouldn't need to give permission. I mean, if you're going to build a separate trail along Cornwallis beyond the fence, that's a different matter altogether. Then you're talking some real cost to build a separate trail. But if they, you know, just could get access to the roads, a public property out there, so they could, you know, drive, you know, they could ride their bikes along it without having a separate off-road, and there's not a lot of traffic on it. So that would be, the road would be okay. But it's, as I say, it's commendable, I think there's a whole lot to do with it. And it would be, you know, a good piece of change, but we don't know what it would cost on any of those options. And the cost would be on the villages, the master associate.
The access route is there, and it's not bad, so it's possible. I don't know if I like it, but I can say this yellow block here where they have people biking and walking across three fifty-two, scared to half their head. I go up and down there a lot now. It's a dangerous road.
This proposed, it's over to basically a walking access trail for the park, but if it really gets down to the trail.
Well, it gets you down to the trail to the park, because I've used that Alcott access, I'll leave, go through Hershey's Mill and ride along very quickly along the middle section of three fifty-two and make a left onto Alcott. And then it's a very tiny little trail at the end of the cul-de-sac, and it takes you out to a pretty tough trail. And then make your way over to the park, and then go from there. So, you know, that's what you do when you walk.
So Derek, you have an idea of how much those crosswalks cost? And not counting all the administrative hours, returning, but just, you have an idea of how much it costs for us to have the crosswalk put up that people were at?
I wasn't able to acknowledge it, Mark Gordon. I have a lot of experience, but depending on the specifics of the design that you brought, probably anywhere from a hundred and fifty to a hundred.
I feel like you were using it, so.
That would be a good recollection. It's a good piece of change, and Ed McCall was aware of that today. And I said, with nothing else, the flashing light sign, we could at least find out some prices for that, it's just one component of that. But it's a good piece of change when you look at the whole thing from soft cost to hard cost.
We're throwing out a lot of numbers for a lot of drivers. I want to look back in six months and see how.
Yeah, you've got to be careful, that's a great expectation.
There's one other alternative that we ought to look at, and that's to not only come down beside three fifty-two on the Hershey's Mill property there, but continue it all the way down three fifty-two, through the intersection which will turn into a trail.
That'd be cool.
I know, because it crosses, that's insured and then it's off.
Yes.
To get through that, but that would be a more direct route. And that's what I was thinking.
Well, if they wanted to cross, then they'd have this stoplight.
Well, that'd be ideal, if you just take it out of the east gate and go all the way down with a separate trail, that's pretty neat.
There are plenty of other departments along that. You have to still acquire some land from private, private, private property owners. So you have the nursery, there's one very there, and so I have to, so that's something to consider, but I'm going to say at this point, you don't need the trails until they'll make those completed, as we, you know, move forward, we can't just start constructing these video trails until you have a little.
The other thing you need to think about is the, the challenge talking about, you know, might connect, not just with the villages, but you know, how many other communities do you have when you're starting to consider video trails and alternatives? And I think that's the effort, you have to look at that. I'm all supportive of communities within our community that want to connect, that has connectivity, you know, a cycle of walk, safely off-road, so I'm all in favor of considering that. But I think this plan, and it's a significant difference in alternatives, and I would do the same, you know, if they would play trail, then start talking on future.
I'm also a little concerned that there's a possibility that even though the intention may be that the crosswalk, the crosswalk might be absorbed by, potentially by a, of Hershey's Mill, there's, my concern is they may not be committed to it.
Well, we might have to be the permanent team to afford, so then we have to have a separate agreement to vote.
And that's, and that's something that, that's another competition.
Anybody here from the villages of Hershey's Mill that, okay, are you here just as a resident, or you're part of the master association?
Yeah, my name is Jeff Smith.
Hold on one second.
Hershey's Mill, there's, my concern is they may not be committed to it.
Well, we might have to be the permanent team to afford, so then we have to have a separate agreement with the village to, 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 to decide.
And that's something that, that's another competition.
Anybody here from the villages of Hershey's Mill that, okay, are you here just as a resident? Are you part of the master associate?
Yeah, my name is Jeff Smith.
Hold on one second, I, I think that-
Thanks, Jeff.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry, I don't do an interview. This is something that is just for more discussion, it's probably something we cover in a public comment unless you're willing to answer your questions.
Oh, so, so, no, I'll keep you out of the comment.
I think we can let you talk, right? Do my comment after the mic, that's nice, thank you.
Jeff, nice to see you, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure we're doing our thing.
Yeah, I'm a resident of Hershey's Mill, and really head of the bike club.
Oh, very good.
So Jeff, what's your last name again?
Smith.
And your address, please, over there.
1224 Princeton.
I probably passed you, Jeff, on the bike.
Obviously. Yeah, I've, I've been thinking for some time, really, I've been Hershey's Mill for five years, that there ought to be some easy access to the park and the trails. And I approached, I guess Eddie Falls, and suggested the trail along the, along 352 with a gate through the fence opposite Alcott, so that all we need is a crosswalk. And I don't know what PNDOT's requirements are, but it seems to me just some painted lines.
No. Jeff, you don't know PNDOT like we do.
That's not our road, that's-
So they are very particular about, particularly what they, what they'll refer to as a conflicted intersection, because you've got multimodal traffic on a state highway that has a, well, it's forty miles an hour there, there is reasonable sight distance as I look where Alcott is, but PNDOT is very particular about that, and so they will, they will take us, and when I say us, if we would join in on this, they will take us through a very long process of design and approvals and agreements for the long-term maintenance and care and et cetera. So, yeah, I wish I could say it was just a simple crossing, just the way to cross a stream with a little prick and you just put a few stones down to cross, doesn't work that way all these years anymore.
They're also not huge fans of the cross.
Well, that's, that's right, yeah. But, but all right.
Well, I don't see any other way, excuse me, to really access the park without riding on the roads.
I know, and that's, that's the whole, you know, in the, in the stall of this whole thing about the suburban communities and trying to connect them and create more recreational and these multimodal environments to get the bikes safely and pedestrians around suburban communities, which forty, fifty, sixty years ago, we weren't thinking about. We didn't talk about curbs, we didn't talk about sidewalks, it's like we were all our own little nuclear units. So it's, the residue that we have for it now creates a lot of obstacles and barriers and complications.
So something more maybe considered further down the line, I think is something that we probably will want to talk about as we're finishing up the plans for finishing up the trail.
At the moment, Jeff, it's a long term.
Yeah, I keep thinking, we'll keep thinking as well.
Like what you're talking about, too, not being on the board, and this is done, we're not up to our lives.
Well, I could be with you, I'm right, I'm right there, at seventy, I could be gone tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Ed, come to Michael before we speak, Cody, you had a question?
Well, I wanted to make a quick comment, sorry to interrupt you, but I just wanted to, I thought David's gonna be in comments about the video trails and, you know, trying to, you know, involve this, it's my own idea, but like you said, it's all, I'll make sure that's the, here we're going for, I'm, I'm, I'm a resident, come in, things are pitched for, I think, we could, I'm not supposed to be crazy, but obviously there's a hurdle to jump in.
Yes, please, you can add others.
Sure, my name is Kelly Marcus, I also am a resident of Hershey's Mill, I'm also a neighbor of Jeff's, at eleven nine Princeton Lane, I did not know Jeff was here, I also didn't know that this was coming up for topic, but the one piece I'm going to add to this in listening, because I've been very interested and passionate about the trail work that has been going on, I myself have actually walked that from 352 down to Alcott and then taken the cut over. And I agree, 352, I highly doubt anyone is actually doing the speed limit, they're usually doing more. And I think I appreciate very much how the board is trying to be prudent in terms of what it is trying to accomplish in terms of these trails. But I do think, and I'll say this, I moved partially to Hershey's Mill, because I actually cared for my mom, and one of the few things that she does and really enjoys is walking. And I think to myself, when, it's one thing for me, who maybe is a little bit more sprightly, but I envision myself living and growing old in Hershey's Mill and how wonderful it is, but I do think if you don't try to tackle some of these things, that what if on 352, kind of like a boarding crisis, is it, is it a moment that will eventually happen because those residents who are in Hershey's Mill, we're kind of stuck on Chandler Drive and we're eager to get out to these other trails? So if there are ways that Hershey's Mill can help be supported, I think we'd like to.
That's great, Jeff.
Thank you for your comments.
Something I have to tell you, at times, I'm anxious to get into Hershey's Mill where it's safe, as opposed to biking around, Jeff knows.
Thank you for helping out with my home ownership value, though, driving up demand.
It's common, common, productive to put my, my bike on my car and drive it to a parking lot to ride my bike, it's not very green, and I'd love to be able to get on my bike in my community and ride trails that we have available.
And again, that's a residue and a dilemma we have in our suburban communities now in the twenty-first century after the development that's occurred in the fifty, sixty, seventies, eighties, where it wasn't being, it wasn't, it wasn't under consideration then.
All right, we would love them to levy, do you consider community day vendor? Derek, what's on this?
Okay, good vendors. This is just a pretty, every year, Jason puts out, already thinking about using a day, which is, when is this year?
Twenty-fifth.
June twenty-third.
Look at their calendars, June twenty-fifth, community day fireworks.
So we are looking for, we're looking for approval for the fireworks vendor as well as payable filing, as he does every year. I'm looking to select the fire technicians, the low bidder, a three bid, and a one-stop party shop for the above the community day services, one-stop, so that you play open and some.
I'll second that.
Fantastic. Any questions, then, on the board? Cody, you have any questions regarding this?
That was when we, that part, we talked about it, David's been excited, it's all good.
Okay, great, we need to see vendors before, are there any questions from anybody in the audience tonight? Saint Don, we'll call a question then, and those in favor.
Hi.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Consider chemical and sign bids.
The bids were open January twenty-fourth, saying that Martin Lord would be the bid, and he's recommending the following allocation, sign and other service followers, they say lining, thirteen thousand five hundred thirty dollars fifty-five cents, or the state highway, sixteen thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars sixty-five cents, and the chemical bid for Sonaish and, um, Salt Lake.
That's often just sewer.
Which is for sewer operations, that can have twenty-nine thousand five hundred sixty, so we recommend.
Madam Chair, I'd recommend that these bids be approved, this submitted and recommended by the Director of Public Works, Martin Lord. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And are there any questions from anybody on the board? I'm going to ask a facility question, so I know the Sonaish, we've spoken about the community already, where sort of, what are the signs, those four? Are these street signs, Gary?
They're street signs, HA Wagon is a, is a sign vendor, so they're-
Yeah, they're the ones that were on the board.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was aware. All right, are there any other, are there any other questions from anybody here now? Any questions from the audience? And I'm going to call a question, those in favor.
Hi.
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 Thank you. Consider air compressor replacement for this.
This is another Martin Lord item, the current air compressor, was purchased in nineteen ninety-five, broke, so Martin priced it out, and he is recommending that fully packed for the, it's offering a twenty-nineteen unit for nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty hours with thirty, three hundred forty-six hours on itself, almost a thousand hour more than the other one, but it's a lot of hours, so he recommends that.
Yeah, the other one has thirteen hundred hours.
Is that about the rest?
It looks like he really scoured, got, once again, it always seems to be a really good price, and he's not looking for a new gimmick, it's like good value, developing what it is.
You put your most, yours on the top of your head.
Yeah, I know. Twenty-seven years.
So I'll undertake a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll recommend the purchase of the fully cat, because it seems to be, you know, the fully cat, in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred hours.
I'm going to show our eight. Second question.
Okay, any other questions up here? If we did a little bit, because it's a long. Are there any questions from anybody in the audience regarding our fully cat sensor? Okay, Saint Don, I'm going to call, Cody, you have any questions?
Ready to roll.
Okay, uh, full question, those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Over to discussion, uh, excuse me, consider fiber funds through new state grant program for upcoming infrastructure projects.
So this is one of the good news ones that we asked, we, it was funny because I think Dave, Jason and I got emailed all in a half an hour and then started emailing each other. Did you see this, did you see this? So the local, it's known as the local share account program, this grant, this grant program is just essentially a couple weeks ago just approved. It was, it's one of those ones that sprung up and it'll probably go away, and you think it partially due to some influx of cash and revenue, funded state level. So in true Commonwealth fashion, they're giving us four weeks, they get our act together and get the application together for, for this grant opportunities up to the million dollars for municipality. So Jason, Dave and I got together, we were looking at what we could do quickly as far as getting plans together that would be appropriate for more of that application, and we came up with the following three recommendations. Again, the Hershey's Mill sewer project is something that we keep, we keep running out there, we're using lots of funding already for it, but as, as you all know, this is, project is kind of ballooned, it's been lost, so we're proposing a fully gap there with six hundred thousand dollars if we can get it. And the Bo tree pond, Bo tree pond project, which, you know, we were talking about ponds earlier, this was on the docket, we're going to have to do it anyway, so.
We have money budget.
Money budget, it would be great to get the grant. Another one is, and this is just an idea that could now go on the various board members, a mobile card AV equipment, we obviously are almost finishing up the AV equipment installation, this would be, able to be streaming live if, you know, we ever went to have a board supervisor meeting outside of this room, if we wanted to take it to the parks and do some live streaming from events, things of that nature. The only correction in here is I would probably request thinking about a twenty thousand for the mobile part AV equipment, because I don't know, they're so astronomical with cost now with everything, that I thought I was a little wild on that, but essentially, these are the three projects we're recommending. I don't know if they're, you know, I don't know if they're quote-unquote sexiest projects you could think of, but again, the way the state is running this program, it's fast and furious, and we have to have it all in by March fifteenth, and these are high things, particularly the first two, we had on the docket, we can get planned very quickly and make a case for ourselves, and we are doing a little bit of a match year of twenty percent. Even though this is a no match program, you have a lot better chance of getting a request of funding if we do that, and also we're budgeting these, I do that.
Well, you know, the first, the first thing with the request for the grant is an essential need, that is essential. The second one, the Bo tree pond project is a need, we have that budget, we have, we have to spend the money on both of them, irrespective, and the, and the, kind of the mobile card is a one, but at fifteen thousand dollars, this is grant, well, if you, if you guys read this, I think you probably did, this is one of the most wide-open grants that I've seen as far as eligibility and eligibility of projects, and I had to kind of chuckle because it seems like when there's vice money involved, the state gets, whether it's gambling or whatever else, they, they really want to just give it away very easily. So I, I, I hope we have good success with it, I'm pleased to take some of the vice money and turn it into something really good.
I have a question, I like it, but should we apply for the whole million instead of nine hundred thousand?
So in other words, hang up another project, add to it, or do you think we're getting-
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea.
Oh, yeah, we just, municipal authority were just talking last night about the big, the cost for the new UV system, for our sewer plant, the Ridley Creek Sewer Plant, UV treatment has to do with some of the final processing of the affluent after the process has gone through, and maybe some people have a fancy toothbrush, you put it in the UV light and it sanitizes it, and it's, it's that, that basic thing, but it's very expensive for sewer plants, so I think our cost was two fifty, two hundred fifty thousand for the new- I think that'd be great to-
I was actually going to suggest that. Good job, dude.
Is a friendly amendment?
Oh, we have first thing, no, we're-
No one, no one, you have, there, you have to interrupt. We might want to check, it looks like there might be a minimum request of twenty-five thousand dollars. For a match, yeah?
Oh, for a project, you mean?
For a project. So the AV equipment.
Twenty-five thousand.
There you go. Gambling money.
Madam Chair, I can move direct staff to apply for a statement through the local chair of town, LSA program to use for upcoming projects, for, you know, sewer projects, requesting six hundred thousand, the Bo tree pond project, requesting one hundred seventy-six thousand, mobile card AV equipment project, twenty-five thousand, and the AV treatment equipment for the hundred and, uh, hundred, hundred ninety-nine thousand.
That's great. I'll second that.
Fantastic, are there any other questions or discussions from the board? And seeing none, anybody in the audience questioning that, no, thank you, and seeing no questions? Cody, you have any questions?
No questions.
No questions on free money, okay. Call a question, those in favor?
I am, I hope you get it.
Thank you. Good luck to us all, okay. Next one is, we're in discussion on refunding debt, getting where? You got it, you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So after the examination of our outstanding debt, helped by the township, it's just over six hundred dollars in general fund debt, and that's about a little over nine and a half million sewer debt. I would like to engage with the FCM financial advisors, I'll see, they were actually instrumental in us obtaining our general obligation funds in twenty seventeen, they've done by far more opportunities in Pennsylvania than anybody else. I spoke with Chris Bamber preliminarily, had a very good conversation with his, and his fund is that, is there any one I want to contact? Because-
He's got a big list, because everybody, you know, refunded, you know, take money with interest rate.
But we have a call date built into our obligation fund, which allows us to refund them as of October, and the contract allows us to do that, I think, it's early. So looking at the market, the way that it is right now, and the opportunities, twenty-twenty-one is a banner year, it's actually a managers consortium webinar today, we've got together and it's a topic of thought. So very fitting- So very fitting, we're not the only ones thinking about this. Uh, the D F O A typically recommends that the government, uh, finance officers association, uh, they recommend refunding your debt, almost if you think about your mortgage, is it worth refinancing? Um, they recommend if you would save no less than two, two percent of the refund in principal and Chris's estimate is a little bit over three percent. Um, bottom line is, you wouldn't necessarily add any length of time for current debt, you basically just saved an additional two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
And that's, that's net of the cost of many, uh, financial.
It's the underwriter, it's the advertising, it's, it's the financial advisor, yeah, every time.
Uh, based on current rates, the market rates, when the time comes when we go to bid for the bond.
Yeah, the cost, uh, it's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and it's about the same right now. Just.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, the authorized staff and the D F M Financial Advisors, L C, in the investigation of the possibility, uh, the possi- uh, possibility in question for the refund, uh, refunding, I mean, finding.
Refunding. Or refunding.
Refunding, refunding municipal third debt. So just looking at the possibility.
Second motion. Fantastic. Oh, any questions in the board?
I can provide a little extra clarity to you, so, um, when I looked at the present of all current debt, um, obviously two point seven percent is what we're getting on it, it's our, uh, basic interest rate on current, uh, twenty seventeen general funds, um, whereas our sewer fund, we have percent, three point one percent. Um, those are long-term debts, so those are two thousand measures in two thousand thirty-two and two thousand thirty-three. Um, we have one expiring in twenty twenty-three, which is four point three percent in the general fund, but that is, uh, only four hundred thousand, three thousand dollars left. So the worry is, these are actually notes held with Delval and I believe they're, Chris and I are going to look really, but there could be restrictions where it's almost like French text, very well, where, but we made it off early and we financed it, we're on the hook for a penalty, which is going to equal what that long-term interest is going to be.
They are, they're flexible, they're, they have some flexibility in there because it's a closely held operation D V R.
Okay.
Well, again, Lucian and Jeff Calhoun, so, um, and they've done very well, uh, and they, they can be kind of flexible there to avoid the penalty with these swaps and that sort of thing, so that, you know, they, yeah, I think I'm glad, I'm glad you're not looking at it. Chris is very sharp, so I bet.
Two hundred and thirty-five thousand is strictly on the twenty seventeen.
Got you.
So I think they love that.
Yeah, I think it's worth, uh, you know, looking into getting a proposal back there, right?
Could you give any questions regarding this?
No questions.
Okay, uh, anybody in the, uh, audience receiving, rush up a question.
Aye.
Why not?
By the way, if, uh, folks that are here don't know it, East Ocean is one of the few municipalities in all of Pennsylvania, uh, with a triple A bond credit rating, one of the very few. Uh, and then it's trifecta when you look at Chester County, which also is a triple A rated and, uh, the school district, West Chesteria School District is triple A rated, so with very good financial management and decisions over, uh, over time. And, uh, uh, I think that, that speaks highly about where we are and who we have, you know, doing this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just your input on this. With the current economy moving in a far higher inflation rate, the feds are even talking about setting up interest rates in March, maybe more in the rest of the year. Is that a fact that you're trying to do?
Yeah.
Would it be higher payments?
Uh, if we would get a better rate line than early.
Like, so would you have to do it before this potential march?
Well, it's all about future forecasting, so right now, uh, estimates are saying that you're, the Fed could possibly do it before interest rates are very high this year, that's just this year now. When you look into the bottom of this in twenty plus years, you're really negotiating every single year in that end. So you get hoop on, which is a percent for that year, and then there's a yield, it's a basis forecast saying, okay, you think you would earn one and a half percent on the market rate. You're, you're saying your coupon is going to pay us four percent, the difference there is called premium. So we're actually given a premium and that allows us to reduce the principal of that particular year. And then you combine those all up in a twenty-year period and that's where you come out to your average rate of the one we had to two point seven. So you'll see the different payments, the entire twenty years, the general rhythm walk around.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then I'm going to call my straight. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cody?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. All right.
That's not working.
Any other matter?
Madam Chair, I just have one, I have a very much, I don't really matter, um, because being here for, for the conference once, I, I sort of just realized recently that, um, no board members, um, here that is going to have any sort of, uh, access to township them or anything of that nature. Uh, and I just wanted to bring that up as a, I guess a mind of concern, mine, because when you look at rates and requests nowadays and, um, talking with, um, text messages, um, it's just one of those things where business needs to be separated from personal life and, um, I'm not telling you more what to do, but I would like to put that out there with maybe you have a consideration, um, at some time in the future that, that you think about that. I don't know that the, adding, going to go, put a line and do that much more to the overall budget, not that I'm trying to spend one body, but again, just from the legal aspect of, of everything nowadays.
That's what I'm saying.
Little bit of, little bit of a concern in mind, and again, there doesn't need to be any kind of decisions tonight, but it's something I want to bring up for future consideration.
I appreciate hearing that.
So, um, I'd like to, actually, I've got a thinking on this as well, and I'd also think, unfortunately, I'd like to have that access, uh, because I would like to be able to receive my township email on my phone when I travel or when I'm at work. That way I can actually stay connected if there is business, so I'd be interested in that.
You can actually do that now, but then your account to your, to your phone again and get your email on the phone. So the question is, is that a smart thing to do?
Yeah, it's a smart thing to do.
And the second thing is, under my account, I, I have a consulting range and I only want it's my consulting call, so I went onto an app called My Number, it's got a second phone number. But the question there is, in discovery, is, is the device discoverable or is the account separate?
That's an excellent question, because I have my personal email on this phone and I have the township email on the phone.
I'm convinced we have a whole.
That's right, that's right. Uh, it's risky, uh, to have it all on one device. Um, there, there are circumstances where, uh, if someone were to subpoena your records and convince a court that you might be deleting stuff from your personal device, they could seize your personal device to get your municipal records, um, or, or they could do a search or, or something like, like that. So it is a best practice to not use personal devices. Um, it's incredibly difficult, a lot of municipalities don't have the resources to provide that to the boards. And, and courts understand that, of course, uh, but, but if you do have the, the wherewithal to separate that out, I certainly do, you'd be so, and so the staff will have their own for those reasons exactly, and you guys are just like them, uh, so, so you'd be treated similarly.
Sometimes I'd use my people service.
I was going to say, I didn't spur this, it's not like a Bernstein and Woodward thing going on here, I just, I'm just kind of putting that out there.
How much is this going to cost?
How much?
I have to, I just wanted to get through that.
Okay.
Some, some good idea.
My number's three of sixteen, something like that. But put it on your senior device.
Yeah, I don't want my device taken later, but.
It depends on which, uh, provider, who you can go with, I'm looking at, uh, a current variety of contracts, we also got, uh, First Net, so the public works, um, I haven't made any progress yet, but, um, you know, looking, seeing if one would make much sense, um, if it's entirely planned, it's just for the staff and, you know, the board or something like that, I mean, lines are to take, a bit harder, maybe, or, you know, what kind of the plans are involved, and there's a lot of my efforts.
Is that something that actually has to be a board, uh, decision, a board, uh, what do you think, is being a real decision, or you just let staff know?
I think you would like it probably, Derek, you, Bill, you, you might, you, you might think about a, creating a, a, really a policy. Uh, I know we had one of these structured for, for that, that arrangement and, uh, that way it gets consistent and it's consistent across, uh, you know, boards, et cetera, and you've got a platform to, to go to, excuse me, how it's handled. What do you, Derek?
I, I agree with Mr. Lynch, you, there definitely one policy to ensure that there's no personal use of the, the business phone and no crossover, so policies certainly like that.
Something you guys can work on.
Uh, well, that's.
I'm waiting for him now.
Cody, do you have any questions or comments regarding that subject?
No, I don't.
You got any other matter that you can bring forward?
I do not, I do not, Madam.
Okay. Um, I received an email from a resident, uh, regarding four-door salesman. There is, uh, they are on the do not, excuse me, do not, do not list, um, but apparently there's no ordinance to, to prevent, prevent, prevent them from reissuing at this time, even if there are complaints. So I would like to, uh, just bring forward the thought that perhaps we should look at the ordinance and maybe make some revisions to that ordinance, it's up for, uh, in the future, regarding policy, letting them know, letting these know, you have complaints and you've destroyed, you're going to destroy a list, it won't be reissued, probably, it's a potential, absolutely complaints, maybe you have the time to, uh, system, uh, prepare it. Something I'd like.
I can do that, I'll do it.
All right.
I'll make a motion to, please, gentlemen, if that's appropriate at this point.
Oh, how can I forget that? Come on.
Calhoun?
I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah, I know, I need to get the other.
Yeah.
Um, public comment? I just have one question, because I'm. Since that was just a discretionary process on the trip, when do I get to fully, you, voice my opinion?
Well, you can start tonight, we start tonight.
Well, I was, I, I already, I already interrupted saying I couldn't, so.
Oh, because I was just starting to say.
Motion, a specific motion here.
So why can I?
Open up the broad palette of what we discussed.
I would like, I would like to know, when is the proper time to talk about twenty or thirty questions I may have on this trip? And I was not, and I'm not saying ask you today.
You could start asking some of them, but if they're a long meeting.
That's okay.
Any public comment for as long as?
No, no, that's not, that's not why I'm asking this, but I want to answer that at the right time, like it's being discussed as a motion.
Russ, you know what would be good, I, and, and you, you may literally have ten, fifteen, twenty questions, why don't you submit them to us? And that may, and that may be a good F A Q for other residents that may have the same questions.
I tend to see those things not being asked, other than, here's a letter I received from a resident, you get to put something, I'm just, I'm just not trying to start a page here, just kind of, when is the proper time to, to bring these questions up?
We're public.
I mean, it's not the first.
Public comment.
Public comment, Russ, so we'll fire away.
I, I, I'll make.
Well, you can ask one.
Not. I'll ask someone like, like these.
All right, but we're certainly receptive to them and we're going to get lots of them. Again, it's going to be, as I said, lots of conversations and lots of money that are going to go by.
Depending on the expensive nature of the comments or not, I would, my personal opinion is if you're looking for a lot, just wait until you have it, so this will happen.
All right.
That's one, that would be, that means no, no less than a month.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Bye, Russ.
Are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none, uh, are, are you coming up, sir?
I have my own concerns, I'm making sure.
Come on, scan the name and, and I'll have to record these.
Yes, my name is African Amani and address is one five three seven, Dr. Lane. I have my concerns, you know, bringing that snow storm, you know, I have, probably not that, uh, snow guy who removed the snow, you know, broke my email box, you know. I mentioned it to township, you know, and I spoke with manager, I think, I didn't know him too, and he offered me just twenty-five dollars, you know, but I have contact, you know, give you the price to fix it, you know, three hundred and twenty dollars. I did it by myself, you know, with my other guy, I paid temporarily for one hundred and twenty-five bucks. I don't know, it's fair, twenty-five dollars, you can drop something that you can pay just twenty-five dollars, I don't know. It's not making any sense.
So you do have a township ordinance, I don't know, on, on the.
Yeah.
Insurance policy.
Where is the resident?
Then it says that it's a twenty-five dollar allotment, um, for a damaged, you know, box.
However, however, last month, um, how do you say your last name, Mr.?
Not one.
Come on, um, Mr. Montague, we, we did have one last week and I, I, uh, last month and I asked about it, it was in our bills to pay list or dispersment list, and I said, well, it's usually twenty-five dollars, what happened here? Because it was, it was substantially more than, it might have been a couple hundred dollars if I recall. Um, and our public works director said, we absolutely hit that one directly with a plow. Whereas the, for the most part, these twenty-five dollar, uh, payments, uh, or reimbursements, if you will, in recognition of damage typically occur, uh, when there is indirect contact where the snow is blown off the plow and made damage or dislodged or even knock a mailbox over from the force of the snow, but not the truck or the plow hitting it directly. And that's the discernment that they've made with this twenty-five dollar universal coverage, if you will, or reimbursement versus a specific incident where the, one of the drivers says, now I, I, I backed up and I knocked that thing over, so it's a different situation. If you have, um, uh, you know, infer, you know, your experience that they hit that directly, either saw it or the way it was, was struck, sometimes you could tell, I mean, if the post was totally splintered, knocked over and broken, chances are it was hit. Um, now, uh, we don't do, so we do some state roads, so if, you know, sometimes state contractors can, can do damage or depending on where the, the houses along the state road. So if there was a specific situation where you know that the plow and the truck hit that mailbox directly, then I think you should submit a, a request with that, uh, and, and we'll take a look at that through.
With a picture?
We actually already explored that with, with the damage, and it was our public works director's opinion that it was hit by snow, based on his expertise, so it appeared of how snow hits it versus how flowers.
You guys are using straightforward, I mean, they, they.
But I saw that things is hit on metal, this is metal, I saw pictures, you know, send the pictures, that, you know, if you have them.
Why don't we take, why don't we, um, take another look at it and see, or, I won't represent any specific, Mr. Montague, but you can see pictures, you know.
You can see pictures.
And it's hard.
Oh, okay.
So, yes, I did show it over here.
Exactly, that's over here, it's, it was, you see all the, all the pieces, it's just complete, all these old pieces all around, and you see them on this corner.
I'm going to see, I'm going to see. So, Cody, you want to look at the picture?
Sorry, I'll worry.
That's good. We can watch a library tree.
This is not for, uh, something quite sick for somebody, that's another question, right?
I find that.
Not, 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 no.
We don't, we don't have.
So let's, it's, first of all, it's never been touched, it's never been, to hit a box, a box, they, they give it to us, I suppose, usually it's the worst of the snow, you push that mailbox up and off of clothes. And so that's why I want, so it's twenty-five dollar, it's twenty-two dollars. So, and that, what happened to that?
It's, you know, so hard, you gotta, you, 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 you know.
So, what we, what we, what we, what we, situation that I'm not, that I, you, that I said, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't. And you said the trip, I want to.
Yeah, it's.
Let's take your second one without guarantee. Let's take your second one without guaranteeing.
No, please, please, sir.
All right.
No, just like mentioning the first time I attended.
Well, we're.
Why, when you come back?
Are there any?
First and second, please, I've first and third, you can pay all month.
I still have your schedule, man.
Um, does anybody else have a, who needs the second? No. Um, I'm going to acknowledge correspondence from Mrs. Feschka. Uh, for some who was, who had actually left NC in twenty ten. And, uh, they then had a large street tree that was transferred from there to the Apple Park, to his marriage. Unfortunately, the tree, after many years, and then he spent some, of resurrecting it, that's finally, he comes to the end of its life. And so she just sent a letter to thank everybody for everything, uh, they do to tend the tree. And, uh, there was not one sent an email regarding the pipeline and the, uh, the, uh, situation that, uh, for, uh, about two weeks ago, in fact. Um, and he's trying to make sure that his comments were entered for the record. And I did call him and discussed that matter and, um, satisfied with it. Um, anything else for, anybody else? Then I'm going to enter the motion. I'm going to, you, Jim? Second?
Yeah.
Do you guys have a touch on? All right, uh, if there's no other discussion on the whole question, or, does it favor?
Aye.
Aye. It was wrong, everyone said aye for me, yeah.
Right.
Aye.
Thank you, Cody, for staying on so long.
We love you, Detective Supervisors, it's fun, everything.